It's what it is.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's, we actually finished a chapter and a half last time. So we're moving, we're being in good progress now. So we're gonna start with chapter five.
Oh, good. I wonder how far you have gotten.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we finished three and four. So, but, but we start every, every chapter in the Bible. So we're gonna read a couple verses from Ephesians today.
Good.
Ephesians.
Now, you told me you liked Proverbs, didn't you? When I met you, when I first met you, you said, oh, there's some quotes from.
I just saw on Facebook, somebody said, Proverbs is like if God had a Twitter account. It's all these short little things in a row. It's like, it's kind of like God's Twitter feed. Ephesians, chapter two, verses one through 10. All right, so Ephesians two, one to 10, I'll start and we'll go around. Can everybody see all right with the lighting in here right now? Paul writes, "You were dead through the trespasses and sins."
In which you once lived, following the course of this world, following the ruler of the power of the air, the Spirit that is now at work among those who are disobedient.
All of us also lived among them at one time, gratifying the cravings of our sinful nature and following its desires and thoughts. Like the rest, we were by nature, objects of wrath.
But God, who is rich in mercy, out of the great love with which He loved us.
Chapter. Keep going.
That was verse four.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Oh, I thought you told us to the end of sentence. Even when we were dead through our trespasses, made us alive together with Christ. By grace, you have been saved.
Do wait for me. Uh, 10:66, I can't.
Verse six.
Verse six?
Two, six.
Two, six. One Ephesians verse. I was there, but okay. For he's last.
Chapter two. We're in five.
Oh, yeah. Chapter two, verse six. Verse six. And raised us up with him and seated us with him in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus.
So that in the ages to come, he might show the immeasurable riches of his grace and kindness toward us in Christ Jesus.
For by grace you have been saved through faith, and this is not your own doing. It is the gift of God.
Not by works, so that no one can boast.
For we are what he has made us, created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand to be our way of life.
Okay, thank you. It's really appropriate to read this today. Today is Reformation Day. You know, we celebrated Reformation last Sunday, but today, the 31st is actually Reformation Day. And this is, this is one of the passages that Luther really latched on to with the Reformation.
That's what I wanted to ask, when I read in the season, Word of Season, whatever. Is Reformation Day always on the same day?
Yes, but, but, but because we're a church that doesn't have worship every day, it always gets, and most holidays get bumped to the following Sunday. The Reformation Day gets bumped to the previous one because tomorrow is All Saints' Day.
Yes.
And so All Saints' Day always gets bumped forward and Reformation always gets bumped backward.
And all Halloween is today.
Well, yes.
Which is the history behind All Saints', isn't it?
Well, it's, you know, it's complicated. There's the, Halloween and All Saints' Day are definitely connected, but the which came first and how they're like developed is really, the more I read about it, the more confused I get. But they're definitely connected. So Paul writes in Ephesians two, "For we are what he has made us." But what is it that God has made us? The verse continues, "Created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand to be our way of life." The phrase "what he has made us" is a beautiful word in the Greek, poema. This word is translated in other English translations as handiwork or masterpiece. We're not accidental creations of God. We were made with intentionality and purpose. And as it says in Genesis, chapter one, "God saw that we were good." So we are made in God's image, and God is a creative God. God made the beauty of the world, the variety of plants and animals that we know about, and even things we haven't discovered yet, and the uniqueness of each and every person. When we are creative, we are embodying what it means to be God's image bearers. We are proclaiming what God made us to be when we make beautiful things. Whether you're a person who enjoys crafts and art or you are someone who struggles to draw a stick figure, God created you as a masterpiece. When we take time to make things with our hands, whether it is a weekly menu for our household, a crocheted blanket, or a woodworking creation, we are connecting with the sacred pulse of handcrafting, a rhythm of creativity and goodness. Well, this ties in with what you read before too. Let us pray. Creator and creative God, you created us with purpose and intentionality. In your infinite imagination, you made each of us unique and gave us gifts and talents. As we make space in our lives to consider creativity and handcrafting, we pray that you would inspire us to live as your people, whether we're engaged in making handiwork of our own or we are admiring the work that others have done. Amen.
Does this include music also?
Sure, why not?
Of course, handcrafting doesn't say it to me or something. Oh, I guess so.
And I think, and in my life, what would resonate most is writing. You know, that's, that's the way, the way I'm most creative is in writing, I think. And I think that's what this chapter is about. It's, you know, it says handcrafting and it does talk about that, but I, but I think as we read through it, it's more about creativity in general.
You need your hands for most musical instruments.
True.
Or even your voice. You, you, you need that.
Your ear.
Yeah. Just hear the tune that you're singing, even if you're off tune.
Yeah, there's not many instruments you can play without hands, I guess.
That's right.
A harmonic, no, you even have to hold a harmonic.
Well, if you have one of those things around you.
Or the thing on your chest.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so the first, the first question here is, imagine that you've been given a free afternoon and the only requirement is that you do something creative. You have access to any supply you might need and you have an entire afternoon free from distractions to do whatever creative endeavor you might choose. What creative activity would you choose? What would you make or do?
Sure, you'd go to town. She's, she's so, she's, she's into a lot of things.
Paint, draw. Try and work with clay.
Me too.
Gardening.
Oh, yeah, that's creative, yeah.
We're having a pumpkin contest at work today. I made a cat out of pumpkins, a mouse, an owl, a turkey. And they said, we need to use a real pumpkin now. Why don't you make a tractor? I made a tractor out of a pumpkin.
Oh, I have a big picture.
Yeah. Painted the pumpkin.
Oh, painted, okay. I was thinking you carved it or something.
No, I made a carved pumpkin. And then I got into work and they said, we're not allowed to use carved stuff because it'll rot.
Oh, yeah.
Food safety, that's the.
Pass it around.
What, your clay, you would have a bunch of clay on hand?
No, I've never really worked with clay except in school, but I'd love to.
That's your next one, yeah.
Try and do something.
Bring it here. And this scarecrow. Scarecrow drive.
Well, that's right.
Oh, that is so cute.
Is that neat?
That is great.
John Deere. So the only thing is like if you touched it, some of the paint just killed off.
What, what kind of paint did you use?
Acrylic. That would be fun. Yeah.
Oh. Put the scarecrow in it.
Yeah.
I love it. Did you have, enter this into a contest?
We, what we're gonna do is like, we take a table and we set up like a farm. They're gonna have a trifle thing and bring a barn on it. And everybody make animals and stuff and we'll set it up and.
Cool. I guess I have to, when will it be on display? I'll have to go.
It's in our, it's in our break room.
So you need to get a job there first.
You know, this weekend.
Maybe you'll get an inside.
Yeah.
If you come down, maybe I could, you know, just like to take you in and look at it. But, you know, like, we usually get like, maybe six of them.
That is such a nice idea.
People departments that do it. The one year, the one girl in the seafood department went on vacation. She came back and the guys that were for the seafood department used a real fish. We walked in and we were like, oh, what's that smell?
Into the fish.
Yes, and maybe they'll get rid of it.
Well, yeah.
But it's creative, but.
Now, now, what you do in the bakery there is you decorate cakes mostly, that sort of thing, right? Now, are you able to be creative with that? Or do you have to do exactly the way?
We have to do exactly like that. Once in a while, they list, you know, like, sometimes we'll have where they can decorate donuts and stuff, you know, for a special event. And, and we make these little chocolate teacups. And one time, you know, we got to mess around with ingredients and flavors.
Ooh, even the flavors. So what else? I mean, I, I would write, that's what I would do. I'd sit down at the computer and just start writing if I had a free afternoon to be creative.
Well, I think we were, you were talking about writing. And what came to mind was your delivery of the sermon. You know, you write your sermons and you're writing, but your delivery of the sermon is very creative because you do it in different ways. You know, sometimes you get interactive with the people and sometimes you have graphics and sometimes you have this and that. So it's a creative process to deliver the sermon. Because anyone could write something, but not only your writing is very creative. And, but, so I think that's what I enjoy.
Great, thank you.
What would you do?
What, but what I do? I don't know, I just have so many things I could do because I know, and I've, I've known this for a long time, that everyone is an artist and everyone is creative.
Absolutely.
And, and so I go crazy because I have so much on my mind that I want to do. But my problem is taking the time to do that because I'll find something else. Even, well, making soup. I make soup for people lately because I know a lot of my friends are not doing so well. But that's getting a little better with people not feeling so badly. But I've been making the same soup, so no longer creative, you know, because I just look, I know. But, so, so that's not a creative process for me. So I was thinking, when my daughter and I were thinking of doing, when I was visiting her, we did painting in Kentucky. She, we went to a pumpkin farm. And she said, Mom, get these little gourds because I painted my cats on the boards, on the gourds. And I'll show you what I did. And I painted them when I was there, but just the way the gourds look, you know, natural beige color. So I have, took some home and I made sure I took them in my suitcase in case they, they stopped me, you know, and said it was a vegetable, I should not bring them there. So I thought I better.
It's not a vegetable, it's art supplies.
I better put it in my backpack. But anyway, I have them and they got, they're ahead and, you know, they're small. So I'm gonna do both cats. And I think I might do that this afternoon. Because it'll be fun and she told me how to do it. And, you know, but I know I won't do. What I won't do is crochet because I tried to crochet a long time ago. And Linda knows this because the person who taught us was, was teaching us how to do crocheting and knitting. Told me that she had taught special ed and I had been the worst student that she'd ever. And she's a lot of fun. I know, but she was, she was. She was teasing, probably. She was teasing me. And because, you know, and I was telling her how I, you know, it's, oh, I'm left-handed, that's the problem now. She says, I'm teaching, you're left-handed. I, I just didn't like.
We're not all skilled at every art. And probably none of us are skilled at every art.
Also, if you don't like something, you don't tend to want to do it, even if you want. I mean, I could try, but if you have to try too hard on something, I can no longer creative about it. Too hard.
Or sometimes if you, you do make some things that you wanna, you get tired of doing that. You wanna move on. Because I wrote down here, I like, I like to cook, I give to my neighbors. I like to write, I do some basic poetry. I did Swedish weaving, but I made sure everybody had, looking, look at me.
Oh, I never heard of that, that's interesting.
Oh, and, but I had, made sure everybody had something and I'm done. So now I just, I like the color, I like to just do that kind of thing. I give blood. See, this is, I'm giving blood today.
That's great, that's great.
I, I did, I had something else on and I thought, it's Halloween.
Yeah.
All of these shirts from.
What a great day to give blood, I never thought of that. It's a great day to give blood.
And I normally do 12 weeks, but they had me down for eight. And I'm thinking, I was just there and I looked, it was in September. So, and, well, no, the end of August. So it is the eight weeks, but, you know, so I'm doing that at three o'clock this afternoon. I thought, okay, get, put that on.
Yeah, it's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like you, too, a couple of you mentioned cooking and you said that, that your soup making is not creative for you at this point. But, but, but cooking, I, I think about, especially things like soups and stews, like. I, I used to make chili every year for Christmas and, and I found that to be very creative because chili's the kind of, you don't need a recipe for. You just, like, I, I had the kind of the stock stuff I started with, but then it would, I'd go in all kinds of different directions and try different things. You know, I'd put like a squirt of everything in the fridge in it and mix it together. Then I discovered chocolate is a good thing to add to chili.
Yes.
Sometimes it just wasn't in the refrigerator.
Yeah.
That's how that's. When I started with, I told before about the potato soup with my friend. My friend, she, that passed away, she was just, she was just such an inspiration at the, at the luncheon that they had. Her sister said, okay, how many here got texts from Bonnie every day? There were 40 of us there and only like five that didn't raise their hands. And she, you know, she was just that kind of person. They, she brought pump stuff for me. And, and she came in my sidewalk where there came, you know, Kari Walker, husband helped her come in. But she made, can you use this stuff for pump? She texted because with the stroke she couldn't talk well, but, yeah, it's, you know.
Well, being creative also is, is getting the smell of things into my environment or the color of things or, you know, and doing something with the material of the bakery, the dough. I'm watching these dough shows, bakery shows and they're kneading the, you know, like clay and something, the smell of the clay and the smell of the wood. That's creative.
Dough and clay have a connection with this, yeah.
And taffy. I'm thinking of. But you know, I love sweets, but during COVID, I was just gonna say that. We all had made sourdough bread.
Oh, yeah.
And my daughter, who lives in Kentucky, and I were doing the, you know, comparing how high we could make our, our bull, our bowl, women, ball of, of sourdough bread. And so we look at, we take a picture of the side and say, how high is yours? We're getting a little better at it and we were teaching each other how to do it. And, you know, we did a lot of baking, a lot more than we, and Linda did it. I think, did you give me the starter? I can't remember. Yeah, you gave me the starter.
I just threw mine out the other day.
Yeah, mine was black and I threw mine out.
I didn't turn black, but it was, that people.
Also, like when you cook, you know, you have the plating.
That's creative too, yeah.
Shows and, you know, they're like.
Even setting a table for dinner can be creative.
It can be, yeah, yeah.
And it, so you don't really have to have a skill in something to create it. I mean, well, you do, but it doesn't have to be a big thing.
No, there's a lot of different forms of it. And it's, some of the things you're describing don't have to be creative. Like you can plate something in a way that's not creative, but the way I do it, I don't know how to plate anything. You can always tell when I'm cooking because it's just, you know, on the plate. But, but that can become creative. And the same thing with, you know, with, with making a soup. You can just follow the recipe and you're done. And that's great, but you can also.
You saw my weaving.
Use your creativity in it.
You have to be careful though, because if you wanna be playing with all these spices.
This is why I never bake, because baking, you can't play around the same way.
I have a Swedish weaving.
Oh, that's beautiful. I remember you brought something here. Wow, it's beautiful. It was big. I can't remember what it was. Swedish or wooden.
That was a, that's a table runner. You can do everything from place mat to table runner.
How do you, you have a weaving? No, you'll look at it and you'll see. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I remember you brought it. I find when I'm being creative, which I have tried many different things, that I kind of lose myself in it.
Yes.
And I lose track of time and it just makes me feel good.
It's like being a child. Jesus says, be as a child. This is what Jesus does, brings you back down to be a child. Letting go of the form you have to fly.
Thank you.
That's why it's a good idea to, for me, when I'm gonna start an endeavor, a creative endeavor, to allow myself a big block of time because you lose, as you said, you lose yourself in time and you can't have boundaries too much when you want to just keep going with the flow. So I give myself, like this afternoon, I was gonna do some, a tour, like clean my windows, but I think I'll wait.
Would you say that it becomes Kairos time, like we talked about a few weeks ago?
Oh, good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it can, yeah. I, I, I've heard that referred to as the zone, like you get into the zone. I think athletes can talk about that as well in a different way.
And wasn't there a word she used in here, which I loved? I, a couple of things just stood out in that, she thinks this is the chapter. It said, stretching time.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're about to get to. Let's move on to that. I'm glad you, that's a good segue for your next question. Yeah, April writes about the way time seemed to stretch out or stand still when she was in her granny's house. It was something about the rocking of her chair and the movement of the crochet hook that made time feel more spacious. Question here is, have you ever had an experience like that? Would activities make time feel more spacious for you? I think we were just talking about that. So, so what else? I mean, we talked about when you're creating something, you can kind of, that, that happens. Is there any other moment in your life when time kind of stretches that way?
When I sit out by the pond in the nature and I just want to stay there all day. It's so, it's such a feeling of, like, there's no time vault at all. It's just beautiful.
Maybe caring for someone else. I'm putting my own things away and I'm just spending time in that particular giving to somebody, whether they're sick or they need something or, that's a little different. You know, you stop your own thing and you just kind of let it, let my own self communicate with them in a way that's a Christian thing we could do to change time.
I think I did years ago, my daughter and my son, they took lessons, music lessons. And my daughter, she just took the flute really good and they had a recital. And she played this one song, it was called Mourning. And I don't think I breathed the whole time.
Oh, wow.
It was just, she just did it, I mean, she's a little girl, you know, but it was just so beautiful and emotional for me, you know, and it just, I think it just stopped time for me, you know.
That's true, music does that for me. And once in a while, when Martin has chosen something that really hits me, I like, they're playing my chords of my heart, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're like, ah, it's just awesome, you know. He picks, of course, he likes a lot of Bach, which I love, but there's some others, you know. And I write them down so I can ask Alexa to play them at home.
Alexa.
She doesn't understand some of my pronunciation.
I think, I think, what I'm hearing, it's, the examples you're giving sounds to me like it's still connected to creativity. Like what, what you're talking about, Sherry, and, and you Karen, because like you're both appreciating others' creativity. Because I see what you're appreciating is God's creativity of the world. And I even, maybe this is stretching it, but I think what you were saying, Lynn, it's, it feels to me like you're creating a space for someone else. And so there's, there's a creativity there too, I think. Of course, maybe the way I'm talking, I could make anything creative, but.
And then another term comes up is prayer. Prayer is really a letting go, just letting, silence. Contemplative prayer, but just, doesn't have to have a name, just, just prayer. And the other thing that comes up is listening to a Roth Mononoff or a Beethoven, on Alexa, wherever you get it. Just like, oh my goodness, that's gorgeous, sweet, with sound in the end of it.
But you said, you said, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, I'm done.
You said, just, I'm sort of making everything into creativity. Or it seems like, I don't know, you said something like that. I thought, well, I think that's how she started a chapter. Like where the image of God, if the image of God is imprinted everywhere, then everything.
Right.
Pulse.
That's true, that's true.
Everything is.
Yeah.
And you don't have to make it up.
Yeah, right, right, right.
You go for a walk. And I gave something to your father I saw on CBS Sunday Morning. Well, I, I recorded it. Anyway, this man listened to birds. And he put, he recorded and he was actually putting the bird songs to music.
Oh, neat.
I, I gave your father the information. I don't know if he ever looked it up or not, but I thought of him right away because, you know, he's into the birds. And what would happen if all the birds got together? We'd have a real chorus.
We certainly could, yeah.
The woodpecker, ding ding.
Yeah, maybe we'd be the percussion, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's neat. I like those men and women that sing a cappella. And they sound like different musical instruments and.
Penitent.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one does the bass.
Yeah, that's cool.
And they'll be around at Christmas, I'm sure. And one thing I don't like about music at Christmas is that they have, they have given Queen B the title of, of Queen of Christmas, and I just don't like that at all.
Who's Queen B that?
Beyonce. The ones that sing, All I Want for Christmas Is You.
Oh, Mary, Mary.
Oh, yeah, okay, maybe I mixed up. I just don't, I just don't like that title.
I think Mary's the Queen of Christmas.
Yeah, that's what, and that's what. That's what people are saying. Anyway, that's off the wall, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, let's.
Yeah, we do this, I know.
Let's go to page 85. So the, the last paragraph on page 85 starts, "What I find is that just as the wind from God hovered over the formless void before the dawn of the new creation," and that's straight out of Genesis one, "so too does the Spirit hover over the chaos and struggle in my life, just waiting to make all things new." How does that resonate with you?
Well, just so you know, he's always there. Scott had a good, he, on Tuesday night, he, what did he say? He said, sometimes he thinks of God, some stories stuck with him as a lifeguard. He sits there and he doesn't really intervene, but he keeps an eye on everything. You know? Yeah, I kind of like that one too. And then the time I heard about the, the coming home and your dog is on the other side of the door. That dog's gonna greet you no matter what. That he's, you know, it's, he's there.
Yeah, I, I'm very, you know, inspired by that because then I know that the Holy Spirit is always with me and I don't have to fret or feel lost, you know, as much so. And if I am, then I can just say, you know, Lord, help me, whatever, songs or whatever. But it's really inspiring.
And what you said earlier about that Christ is King. The chaos may be there, but Christ is there, the Prince of Peace. Which I love the name of this church. And, yeah, so, yeah. And I don't know, I think some of the, Lynn and I talk about our sleep, we're gonna know what helps you sleep. And I think sometimes when I do a little mantra or a prayer, I'll say, the Jesus prayer. And I'll say it over and over. It just sort of calms me down. And the chaos of my mind, the monkey mind that's going around and around, worrying and planning, sort of gets taken over by the Jesus prayer.
When I get down and I learn to say, praise you, God, praise you. Just, and then the things, the depression's pretty much gone. But just keep praising God, praise, praise him. And it says in the Psalms, keep praising God.
In all things, in all things.
Absolutely.
One thing I learned a long time ago that I like to share with you when we talk about prayer is that, to me, the difference between thanks and praise is that we thank God for something God has done for us. But we praise God for who God is. And even in our moments when we cannot find anything to thank God for, we can always praise God. And that can help, you know?
It takes the evil one away.
Yeah.
Goes away.
We don't realize how being there is important so much. People sometimes think they can't do something for you. But just being there, and sometimes their presence is Christ's coming through to you, giving you some comfort, giving you some peace, giving you, you know? So, the being there is something, you don't have to do much more than be there.
I talk a lot about how God is always with us in times of trouble. That's like, one of my things I say a lot. But what I hear in this passage here is, is a reminder of the next step. That when God is with us, just like in Genesis one, the Spirit of God hovered over the face of the waters, but not just waiting there and seeing what happens. That that Spirit had a plan and suddenly that Spirit burst into life and created everything. And that's what I'm hearing here, is that when God is with us, it's not just that God is, you know, God has hand on our shoulders and keeping us safe, which is true. But it's also that sometime soon, something new is gonna burst up. And that's, I find that to be incredibly hopeful.
And, you know, even though you say, plan, you're using that loosely because...
I am using it loosely, yeah.
Because some people do believe that he's already planned our lives. But the, I don't, I think that, and we were talking about this before, I think he works for our very best because he loves us. And so, we have, we make, we can make choices and decisions. But we know, he's like, he's like, the loving Father is always like, oh, why'd you do, you know? He shouldn't really have done that, but that's okay. You have to learn. Yeah, what did you learn from this?
Yeah, your hair's gonna be purple for the next month now, you know?
That happens.
Sometimes you have to speak out when you really don't want to, like, Sunday. Yeah. They had speakers, they didn't have a microphone or anything at this luncheon that we had. And people were talking and the pastor was in the back. We almost sat there, I was completely sat up further. But anyway, he was near the back and you couldn't hear. He stood up and he said, may the peace of the Lord be with you. And we all, we all turned and said, and also with you. And then he said, and would you please be quiet back here because we can't hear, can't hear. So, I don't think he really wanted to do that, but the moment made him do that. And we were glad he did it, but it didn't work too well.
Well, the Bible always...
Worked for a couple minutes.
Use the excuse in the Bible. Well, the Bible gives me a lot of excuses. Like, or guidance, guidance that speak the truth in love, you know? And you should speak up because there's also that saying that if I, you know, you're, what is that saying about? Don't speak, if you don't speak up, you'll, oh, I know this. Silence is golden, but it's yellow if you don't speak up and it's important and for justice and for things that are really important. So, silence is gold, but it's very yellow, it can be yellow. You're yellow because you don't have the courage, you don't have the courage to speak up.
And that's a tough balance, you know? When, when is it, in Ecclesiastes is the time to speak up and it's time to be silent, you know? Let's start on page eighty-nine. This is in the last paragraph, it's the second sentence, starts, "When we are creative." "When we are creative, we allow our innermost selves to speak. In our creativity, we give voice to whispers buried deep within ourselves. We learn more about who we are." Has that been true for you? Do you find you learn something about yourself when you're creative?
Well, I've got a long story. I told you my art. I tell you, I was really bound up as a kid. And then finally, this art therapist comes up to me. She said, why don't you go home and do your art in a different mode? And she would get me into that sort of meditative. And I started drawing with my other hand, not the one with authority, but the left hand, wanted to say something. And I started saying things about my family life and I, no one talked about that. That my father was, you know, I did pictures of my father as this horrible stuff coming out. Me dripped down because they hadn't really planned me and what it was like for my mother. And I saw the big painting of my mother, who just kind of gave up, just gave up. And it's a great, the things that come out when you're creative, sometimes I'm scared. It's a scary thing sometimes. And imagine the artists were scared sometimes of things that they saw. But it revealed the truth, the truths of all things. It was unbelievable what art, the arts can do for us.
Yes, and I have, I have a little plaque that says, the artist paints with their soul. And I'm thinking, so I've been working, trying to, working in this. You shouldn't really work hard at that because you're not going to uncover your soul if you're working hard at it. But I, that's what I'm trying to do myself. Because I know that as I paint, it's showing who I am. Revealing my image in the painting. And that's what I wanted to create, my uniqueness. And, you know, it's, it's hard to express, you know, what you mean by that, but...
True. And when you write, write your poem, your prayers, your whatever, yourself, it's...
Well, at the hospital too, in mental health, they have art therapy. That helps people deal with their feelings too.
I really like the idea of using your non-dominant hand as well. Like, I've actually had tried writing a dialogue between my right hand and my left hand sometimes, like, to kind of get in touch with like, an inner child type thing. And it's really remarkable how, you know, you really felt as though there were two sides of me talking to each other. It was, yeah, it can be...
That's an idea. Maybe we should paint with our both of our hands.
That would have to be finger paint, you know?
Yeah, why not?
Why not?
It'd still be expression.
Yeah, like, use one color for the right hand, one color for the left and see what comes together.
Do not look for the form at the end. Oh, it's not, it doesn't look like a tree. No, wait a minute, that's not more after.
Or with clay or something, where you need those things.
Let's, the colors speak, let's...
Okay, Lynn, you're on next one.
I'm ready.
This spring, we're gonna have a little therapy thing. Not so much therapy, but it's gonna be a fun, creative thing where we express. I wonder too, if there's a difference between writing something and putting it on the computer when you're actually using, you know? Even they were saying about cursive, kids aren't learning cursive. And yet, that's holding something away from them that they would benefit from by, you know? I don't know, that all depends on, I think, how much you have used it from a very young age. Because for me, I started using the computer later. And now, when I want to write a heartfelt letter, a long one, I don't feel that I'm able to get it quite as heartfelt typing it up. So, as writing, so, but if I had started...
And that's my experience. I started using computers in first grade. And I do find I can do that. And I, and I find when I'm typing, I mean, I can touch type. I've been able to touch type since like, high school. You know, I don't even know what I'm doing. Like, I'm just, I just, just like, it's like, just the way that your brain tells a message to your hand and you start writing. I can do the same thing with a keyboard because I was brought up that way. So, but I, but I think if, if I were, if I had to peck at it, yeah, I think there'd be such a break between it that you wouldn't, wouldn't be creative the same way, you know?
And maybe AI will allow us to not even have to, to do physical things, I mean, with our fingers. We can just think about what we're saying to somebody and not be going to...
I don't know, I don't know.
I think it's immediate.
There's all kinds, there's all kinds of things that can happen that are positive that are in the future.
I've been writing to someone since I was eleven years old. I don't, I wouldn't give up that snail me almost.
I wouldn't either.
A matter of twice.
But I really like what you said, Karen, about it. It's about, you know, kind of how you, what you grew up with in your formative years, you know? That, yeah, yeah. Because I don't feel like I lose something typing, but you would if you didn't have that at that age, yeah.
Yeah, I look at my grandkids and I wonder, are they missing something or not?
I don't know that they are, yeah.
By the sounds, that's good to know.
I have, I don't know how to say it, opposite reaction. When I'm creative, as soon as I'm done, I tear the thing apart inside of me. You know, and I was, it's been that way for years and years. And then people say, oh, this is beautiful. I'm like, no, look at this. And I pick everything apart about it. And reading the next chapter, she gave me that thing, an idea about not feeling that you're worthy enough or something? You know, you can't, you know? Okay, this person made the same thing, but look how theirs came out, but look at mine, you know? And that's me.
Yeah, I mean, that still is your creativity telling you something about yourself, even if what it's telling you is...
That's how I think of myself.
Kim's not here, but her banners.
Yeah.
The beautiful, well, but she knows there's little flaws in them and it drives her crazy. She's like to, you know, it's like that weaving. I can tear out a whole couple of rows if I had to, but I try not to. Nobody will notice if it's off a square or two.
And even if anybody does notice, or if I notice a flaw in one of her banners, I don't care. I think that's what makes it beautiful. But the person who made it has a different, you know?
And I think we all, so many of us have heard that it was the, is that the Amish or the Quakers have put in a purpose? They put in a flaw in their quilts or whatever because they want to remind themselves that they're not perfect.
Right.
And, yeah, so, so that's built in there. And even if they might be perfect, they don't want to be.
I knew somebody, this isn't quite the same thing. I knew somebody, whenever he bought a new car, would take a hammer and just put a little ding in the bumper. So, that, the first ding's already there, I don't need to worry about it anymore.
The first thing I thought, I felt so upset.
Yeah.
And I like when, when something goes awry in the service. You know, it just shows that, you know, not everything goes right all the time.
And I like the way the pastor handles that. And, you know, all his assistants and everybody, now, they feel, they, they obviously don't get all wound up about it because the pastor has already shown them that it's okay.
Especially in baptism.
Had a really, really well behaved kid at the baptism, Stone Church on Sunday.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, the little girl was crying when I saw the baptism here.
Oh, here, yeah, that was different, yeah, yeah.
Wind it down for a while.
But when, okay, you go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Well, when they're misbehaving, things don't work out very well. When kids are just misbehaving in a class, that's not terribly awful. It's a sign of, it's like sickness, you know? It's part of God's, he said, now listen, listen to that sickness, what's going on? Or, you know, it's, it's a time to, to think behind it, rather than let it go.
With a little ballet.
There's something in that.
Yesterday, we were shopping and we were in Hobby Lobby. And this mother, her two children, they wanted this and that. And they're like, maybe four and six, and they were screaming. And, you know, my friend and I just felt bad for the mother because you don't know what to do when there's two. You know? And I, picking your kids shopping is a trip. So, yeah. And if they're not in a good mood and they, you know?
Take them, and when they take them, mothers sometimes can't help it. But they take them during their dinnertime or their naptime. You know, I get grumpy, I get very grumpy when I don't get my rest, I can imagine with a child.
I remember seeing the pastor down at the corner. I left church one day, I was here, must have been doing altar work or something. I think you went down there for lunch or something. And you, and you had Alex out and you were, you were pointing, going like this to her. Out, like, down the steps, out there, like, she wasn't behaving or something.
It could have been, yeah.
Took her outside, but, and as I went around the corner, I thought, oh, she's in trouble because of vision, yeah.
I don't remember that, but I certainly believe you.
That's parenting, well, something's just sitting in your head, that's parenting.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody says, I've often heard it said that there's no manual for parenting, but the real problem is there's tons of manuals. You go to the bookstore, there's a lot, but they all disagree with each other. So, might as well not be.
None specific to you.
So, this actually connects a little bit to this next one. Perfectionism can have a way of interrupting our creative pursuits. And the author of this book quotes Anne Lamott by saying, "The perfectionism is the voice of the oppressor, the enemy of the people." Does perfectionism keep you from pursuing your creativity? It has to be right, it has to be perfect.
It's a little voice telling you that. And I remember years ago, I was, I was always criticizing myself negatively. I'm better at it now with the art than I used to be. And on the, I think on the front of my drawing or book, I, my art book, I drew a person saying, you can't do this. And it was, it was the voice I was supposed to get rid of, you know? And I'm trying to be aware of that, that I can, you know? So, yeah.
When you look back on art history, for instance, or music history, all the people who've composed or, you know, some of the different ways people have expressed, you know, Sheila and Picasso and, you know, Michelangelo. I mean, the different ages they lived in, but the different ways they said things. And I think it's fantastic. And the musicians who, who wrote gorgeous things, and then there's not so good things then too. But the imperfectionists got, or the perfectionists got to go. I think there's a time for it, but I think it's gotta go. Maybe you need to publish a book like that. You gotta have it perfectly so someone will read it and it'll be sellable. But other than that, it's too much. And that's why I'm wearing an AI. It's a perfect science. It's got, doesn't have to be perfect, you know? It has to be. And it doesn't have anything to do with smelling or sensory, sensuality.
Well, yeah. As long as humans can, can have some say in what's going on with it.
Yeah, that's true.
We're okay, I think. But then again, we have to be trusting of humans.
He has one?
This is the book that, that I, I created this book, but it's, all the hymns that my father wrote, we gave to him for his fiftieth or ninty anniversary. But I, you know, I kind of formatted it and did all that. And this picture on the cover is made by an AI. I went, I went to, I don't remember which one I went to, but I went and I said, you know, because, you know, he, he called, when, when he published all the words of his, his hymns, he called them the Rainbow Christmas Tree, another song, or something like that. So, I thought, well, I'll call this the Rainbow Christmas Tree hymnal. So, I typed, draw me a picture of the Rainbow Christmas Tree. And this is what I came up with. And, you know, and I, I like that. And I know one of the, one of the struggles with AI is that, well, you know, I also, I could have paid an artist to do this and now I didn't. But, you know, I, I think AI is gonna be like a lot of other technologies that a lot of good can come from it and a lot of bad can come from it. And I'm not sure what exactly that's gonna end up with. But, but here's an example, for better or for worse, so, I think it's pretty.
I love this.
Beautiful.
In fact, I forgot to order one. Am I too late or?
No, you can order, I can order whatever. Yeah, so, so April writes, "Most days I feel less like a masterpiece and more like a rough first draft. But if God sees us as masterpieces, as purposeful and beautiful creations," you know, what does that, what does that say to us? God says we're already masterpieces, what does that mean?
I'm thankful that I have, I'm still alive and well enough to be able to reach my fullest potential, even though I haven't gotten there yet. And that's what it's telling me, that I'm not, you know, I'm a masterpiece that can be fulfilled. But I'm still working on it because I know that I'm not there, I'm not totally full at my fullest, reaching my highest potential. Even though, she does say that God thinks we're a masterpiece in any way.
Yeah.
It's hard.
How does, how, does anybody find that easy to accept? That God considers you a masterpiece?
Yeah.
You do?
You could accept it.
Great.
You accept it?
Tell me about it.
I think it's hard to accept that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a process, no, 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 it's a process. Everybody can. Work in progress, right? Work in progress, right?
I think he gives us a free will to take care of ourselves, to keep us more like a masterpiece. You know, don't, learn to say no if you're under stress because you can keep yourself better then.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Remember, your body is the temple of God.
Right. And I want it to be here for a while.
And also, you want to help other people. And how can you help other people when you are hurting or you can't move or you can't do this or that, tired? So, it's a hard, when you get older especially, you have to pay attention to all these.
Well, I want to take care of myself so that my kids don't worry about me. They, right now, there's enough on my daughter's plate. Holly's good, well, I had a nice surprise this morning. It has, it fits in here, I think. I came in the door, Sarah was leaving, but she's coming back, but she had to go home for something. And she said, oh, she said, by the way, she said, tell Holly that I had, that I, she had something done with her knees and she stayed on. So, I wrote out a hundred Christmas cards, I'll bring them on Sunday. You know? I've already given her close to fifteen hundred, just my part. So, and I have, you know... So, and I have, you know, I have almost six hundred at home now.
If this keeps growing, if this keeps growing, they won't just be sent to United States troops, they'll be sent, we'll be able to send one to every person on the planet eventually. It's a kind of thing.
Yes, somebody asked me, is this done across the whole United States? I said, I can't believe that there's not other people doing this.
But it's not coordinated, like it's not, it's not like.
Well, they might be doing something, I don't know, Ohio or Arizona.
I'm sure this isn't the only one, but.
Yeah, but, you know, and I know she's got eight thousand at home. I have five hundred and fifty to give her now. I already gave her nine hundred and fifty, so anyway, it's, but Sarah, and I just picked up two boxes, I don't know who wrote them, they were like in envelope boxes, two boxes, there was fifty cards written out in each one, but they were already in this, these two boxes, fifty cards. I don't, I don't know who did it, it doesn't matter.
Were they written in already?
Yeah, they were sealed, they didn't have to be sealed.
Because I have some to bring in Sunday, but I didn't write in them because I'm gonna do pockets.
You know what, we'll be ready for next year. I already bought, I already have like thirteen hundred cards for next year.
Well, I have, I have trouble with James, the Book of James. He says, unless you have works, you're not okay. I mean, that, to me, that's what he's saying, but maybe you can correct me on that. And then here, it says, you don't have to have.
Well, well, first of all, Martin Luther had a lot of trouble with the Book of James too. He called it a book of straw, he thought it was, it was a mess. But when I read James though, when I hear him talk about works, what I hear him saying is, you know, if you say you have faith, then show me your works, like as a way of saying that like, if you really have faith, it's going to manifest itself as works. Not that, not that it's your works that, that, that do anything for you, but it's, I mean, that's how I read it, and maybe, but I read that through a very, very blinkered Lutheran lens probably, but, you know, the way I see good works is that, is that God, you know, when, when we, when we accept God's grace, the moments when we can't actually do that, that frees us up to do good works. You know, that's, it's not that we earn God's love by doing them, it's that once we accept that we don't have to do anything to earn God's love, but we already have it, then, then we can ask, well, then what am I gonna do with my time? I'm gonna do, you know, good works, I'm gonna, as a way of saying thank you to God.
Well, there's a quote that I wrote, I think, is, I think it relates to that about trading the idea of human producers for the balm of human beings as makers. So, instead of looking at ourselves as we have to produce something, produce, produce, produce. We can be makers and not merely doers.
It's like the difference between being on an assembly line and being, you know, a craftsman.
Once the hands have touched something, there's something living.
And there's something about the money, the monetary gain. If you really, I love it when a young person tells me, they, they're not making that much money, but they enjoy their job. And they're, because they're doing something they really enjoy doing, you know, it's like, it's not producing money that much to them, I mean, as much money as they could, you know, I want to, it's something that they really like and look forward to going to work. And I think that's the difference, you know, with the producing, I think making isn't necessarily a craft.
Farmers come to mind.
Yeah.
They do it hand.
There's a creativity there, isn't there?
And they aren't well paid. Because some of the.
Some of the major farms get a lot of money, but I'm sure it doesn't trickle down to.
Phil Poliscu, his grandchildren were there, and I said to them, so, do you like, you know, farming? Oh, yeah, they really liked it. So it's, well, they've grown up with it and, yeah. And Phil did remember the Thompson Farms out behind the high school, which just made me feel good.
So, so April writes on page ninety-seven, if you want to read along with it, or is it on ninety-seven? It is.
At the end of the paragraph, maybe, because I have it underlined, or some of the underlined.
Starts, "Until we find the courage," where's that? Until.
Oh, yeah, it's the.
Oh, it starts at the bottom of ninety-six, actually, very bottom of ninety-six. "Until we find the courage to receive grace and let our imperfections hang out, we will either create nothing at all, or we will create thin shells of what could be, all the while believing them to be fuller than they are."
And I like the last sentence in that paragraph. "When we mess up, there's grace and a red pen so we can get to revise."
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's an interesting balance there that, or almost a dichotomy that, you know, God says we're a masterpiece, but at the same time, we're imperfect. So it's, it's even in our imperfections that we're masterpieces.
So Sheri, you have the red pen for revising.
I do a lot.
Well, you know, I remember not using a red pen when I was writing corrections for people, you know, classes, students, because I remember how turned off I was by it and how, when I received the red pens, that I, I was, it just hurt me a lot, just to see the red. So, I think, I'd rather see green or black.
You're right.
To revise myself, right? Because it's not so threatening. And it's a more loving, because red could be, could be a loving color because it's love, but it's.
Also sacrificial flavor.
Yeah, bloody.
Report cards used to have, would be E, excellent, satisfactory, or you'd get that red U that meant unsatisfactory. As a, as a kid, eh, you know, you don't really think about it till your parents tell you.
Yeah, right.
You better work on that one, you know, yeah.
Well, I think about when I, you know, when I wrote my book, I, you know, I wrote the full manuscript and I sent it in and I thought, well, this is, this is perfect, it's done, like, you know, whether they like it or not, it's perfect. And, and this, this publisher said, you know, we, we see a lot of potential, we'd like to take you on, and, and the first thing we're gonna do is get you a developmental editor. I thought, okay, I don't know what that is, but, and I figured, well, you know, a person will see, you can probably find like, oh, there's a typo here or something. No, that person came back and wrote like, okay, this is a really good start, but here is, and just ripped it apart, top, top, bottom. But, what I learned through that is that what, what that developmental editor gave me was not how to write it, was not, was not like, didn't say, well, I'm gonna change it to this for you, just pointed out all the parts where it could be a whole lot stronger than it was, and pointed out to me like directions to go and things to not do. And so I did all the revising myself, and I looked at it like, this is a whole lot better than it was, you know, and, but, but that, when I first got that, that message with all of the, that, that hurt a lot. But, but I had to, you know, I don't think, I think every, you know, writer and probably lots of other types of creative artists, you know, have to go through that, that it's, it's not as done as you think it is, and the criticism or the editing is not meant to be an attack, but, but it feels that way in the moment. But then that shows that, you know, you're able to, you know, I was able to take that red pen, and the book is, whether it's good or not, it's a lot better than the first draft, I'll tell you that.
Most of the great artists didn't sell anything in their lifetime.
Vincent Van Gogh died a failure, you know?
Damn, you know, but, it's what his joy he's brought to.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
We're gonna read a book about him in our book club. It's about, about, yeah, it's called The Secret of Sunflowers.
And he knew that secret.
It's about the wife of Theo, his brother, and she, how she took over the selling of his paintings after he died. It's a, it's a historical novel, so, you know, there's, they took some license, but it is, I thought it'd be an interesting book to, to read, because I always liked Van Gogh, all of his stuff, not only Sunflowers.
You make me think of, there was an author, there was a story, I don't know, I don't follow authors' names or anything, but the woman was doing the writing, but the husband was taking the credit.
Oh.
It was a movie or something, on TV or something.
Helen Mary was the, the wife?
And then she finally spoke up that it was her, not, not.
It happened in music too, Schumann, or one of those people that she wasn't allowed to publish, so she took a man's name off.
A science, a scientific, a science woman, I think it was, was it not Einstein, but maybe, but, somebody, you know, the wife oftentimes does a lot of the work.
Was it, was it Mary Shelley who wrote Frankenstein? Wasn't that originally published under a man's name for, for that reason, just because?
Yeah, many of, many years ago, the women.
Oh, and you know, the Bronte sisters, they definitely published under men's names at first, yeah.
Yeah, it must've been, it must've felt really terrible, there, you're so proud of your work and you had to put a man's name on it.
Yep, yep.
It's, it's second. Terrible, terrible life.
So where might you make space for creativity this week?
It's an exciting thought.
Well, I was thinking, I just can't just sit in my studio all week, because that's not life, but you can, I think I can, I can probably look at something and be, look at it as more of a creative endeavor than I'm usually doing, you know, because I have to do it anyway. Like even going grocery shopping, or even like looking at, I'm looking for recipe, things for recipes, I'm looking for spices, I'm looking for, looking at something positive about this experience and making it more of a creative activity, because I have to go and do that, and that, I can't be sitting in my studio the whole time, even cleaning the windows and seeing this big streak date made, and I have to, because he won't do it. I said, I'm gonna go make that streak. He said, I cleaned.
That was creative, he created something.
I cleaned those windows, so why are you gonna clean them again? I said, I can't stand this streak, so I'm gonna go and do it. That can be creative, because I'll see the sun shining, so.
And I'm gonna be back at the rummage sale and hopefully I can organize the kids' corner that they've given me.
You do a very nice job of that.
Do you find that to be creative?
She always makes that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
You've been, yeah, I, I keep, I, I tell, everybody mostly knows that I keep losing space. I have already put two chairs together to put a tote on with things in, or I pull, I get so high boxes and pull them out so far and put stuff on so people can see them, because I'm not giving tables much, that they need them everywhere, so yeah, I'm.
You have to be creative.
I am creative with that. But I've, I backed off from it some, and I said, well, somebody else will have to pitch in and, you know, do some of this also, but, and then they said, well, we're keeping all that stuff over there for you, and I said, yeah, okay, but I'll do what I can with it.
Yeah, totally.
Well, when the pastor went through the other day, I had arranged, there was so much Christmas stuff, and I thought, well, in between I'll go through bags and boxes, but then I'm gonna do this Christmas table, and there was a six-foot table left, and he was leaving the fellowship pome, I said, you see all the Christmas stuff this back there? He said, yes. Well, they wanna put this all on this, on this six-foot table, it's not gonna work, so, you know, you have to be creative.
I think I'm gonna do more with my inner child. I have to sit and, you know, say, okay, my right hand's gonna say this, hello, how are you today, you know? And then the other side says, there's this, there's this book called Recovering Inner Child, and she says, the left side is gonna answer, so it has a different color. And I, when I go through the next night, I've had a dream. Sometimes I've had a dream that I'm sexually, you know, feeding babies or something, and I'm going, who's in there? Someone's inside me, you know, saying something. So then I'll be more excited about doing it again, like who's in there, wants to say something. So I'm gonna do more with my inner child, let's see what happens.
Interesting.
It's an exciting process.
It's, you know, it's an intention, you know, to look at things in a different way sometimes, our mundane things, as I was saying, for the grocery shopping or something, because, I mean, let's face it, we've got things to do, people to see, you know?
But is, but is that always, I'm, I'm struggling with that because I always get that way too, and I think, that's not.
Is that, is that like the difference in chronoist time and chirotist time? You know, we can't, maybe, maybe not every moment can be creative.
No.
But, but maybe every day can contain both, you know? I mean, there are some, you do need, you know, you need to wash the dishes.
Clean the floors.
You need to, yeah, you need to, whatever, whatever task you find to be menial, it still needs to be done, but, but there's also time for, for other things too.
And there are different ways of doing things, like you might try doing a different way of doing your floors, or doing your windows, or doing whatever.
Well, I'm giving blood today, so I'm, I'm donating to the blood bank for other people. There was a time I couldn't, I didn't wait enough. At one time, I did not wait enough to give blood.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's a way of really, you know, creating life. I mean, not creating life from nothing, like giving birth, but, but it's, you know, you're providing life for someone who might without it.
And it keeps, they send you the report, so I'm also keeping an eye on my cholesterol without going to the doctor's.
There you go.
Because they send you back, you know, what your cholesterol was.
Emperor Pearl used to give platelets.
Yeah.
Just night, so she went into the nursing home practically.
My iron is low sometimes, so, you know, you learn to eat, that morning, you eat raisins on your cereal or something, and I've already had that happen. And caffeine will cut down on your iron.
Oh, really?
Because I was over at Sleep Belt one time and I couldn't get these, your iron is low, because they, they used to come to Sleep Belt Nursing Home, and it was the holidays and they said, you know, I said, what do you mean? I said, I do decaffeinated coffee and all that.
Well, it drives it, helps him out too.
But then, oh, and then they, I, they said something about caffeine, and I said, oh, it's the holidays, you eat a lot of chocolate cookies and chocolate candy, and, so, you know, I don't, I eliminate that, and I'll, I'll eat some beets or iron.
I had a friend who, who had some kind of condition that his blood had more iron than it should, and what they told him is, you know, they said, first thing we want to try, you know, before medication is, I want you to start giving blood as often as possible, just give blood every eight weeks and, or whatever it is, and, and that seemed to help, you know, and what the heck, it's helping the other people too, so.
And maybe I'll get a T-shirt today.
Yeah, not better than that one.
That's where I got, I had like, I, one of the original T-shirts had Toucan bird on the front, and underneath it said, "You Toucan, you give blood."
You Toucan.
And I mean, that shirt is like a small, so I've had, you know, long gone, but, I always read the extra large and, you know, so. Oh, that's how I, that's part of my creativity, I guess, I'm, I give blood and other people can't.
Where do you go?
Creating other people's lives.
Tire company.
Tire company.
I was there the first day they opened that. What, that was chaotic, because they weren't sure, they had the chairs here and this over here, and, you know.
Have you ever been to the Miller Blood Bank, their, their main center in Bethlehem?
Only once or twice.
It's nice.
Yeah.
It's like luxury in there.
Yeah, but, you know, it's a close, well, some, the church used to do it, we used to have it here.
Yes, we do.
All right, I am thinking, given the time, I think maybe this is where we'll stop for today. We did finish the chapter, so I think, I think maybe this is a good place to end. So let's, before we close with prayer, I do invite you to, you know, to write a few words about what you hope to bring with you from this, from this chapter, so I'd like you to take a moment to do that.
Can I, can I make one?
Sure.
Read a few pages, because that's a favorite book.
Go right ahead.
It's three twenty. Now to Him, who by the power of work within us, He is able to accomplish abundantly far more than all we can ask for magic. To Him be the glory of the church, and praise Jesus to all the nations forever and ever.
Amen.
Oh, we, oh, never mind, that has to do with Tuesday night, never mind, a different, I had a question to.
Well, maybe it all blends in, if it's the, if it's the word of the Lord, is that what you're asking about?
No, no.
A passage from them?
No, it's something about Lazarus.
Lazarus.
Karen, this is the end of October, what are we, what are we doing? Will we continue this next week?
Yes, I told, I did mention it to Georgia, that she won't have to look for our videos because we're going to be going till Thanksgiving here.
Oh, we'll just keep doing this through, through November? Okay, great.
So we should, we might even finish.
We might, if we can get back to two chapters a week, we didn't do it today, but, yeah.
In any case, yeah, because Kim is, when she gets back from Aruba, is gonna start looking at what to do with the art and the spirit for December.
All right, so, so I will be prepared with chapters six and seven next week, hopefully we'll get, we'll get into seven, but we'll definitely start with six. Let's, let's close with, with the prayer I created, so. Thank you, Lord God, for all you create.
Thank you, Lord God.
For all we create.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord God, for the moments we wait.
Thank you, Lord God, for the moments we wait.
Your grace lights upon us in so many ways.
Your grace lights upon us in so many ways.
Help us to see it in all of our days.
Help us to see it in all of our days.
Amen.